I'd like to call the meeting, no order. The first thing on the agenda is the review and approval of the agenda. We have basically one item, one action item on our agenda tonight and in the executive session. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Cherry? Second, Sanghida? Thank you. Approval of the minutes of the April 27th...
Page two.
Sorry, all those in favor? Why do you bother? Approval of the minutes of the April 27th. Can I get a motion to approve? Gene, second. Jen? Any comments on the minutes? All those in favor? Unanimous?
No standing.
No standing? Thank you. Comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the Board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes are allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. Is there anyone who would like to comment?
I don't think so.
Great.
I guess I'll speak from here. It seems really official. Oh, and that's my son. Holy crap. Just dramatic, seriously. My name is Patty Zaccalolo, and I'm here tonight both as a parent and as the co-president of the East School PTC outgoing. But I'm really here to urge you or to adopt or to approve option 3A. That was as proposed. This would serve to renovate the auditorium, as we all know needs to be done, but also provide the much-needed additional classroom space at Saks. This will alleviate the current capacity constraints that we, anyone who has a Saks student knows is problematic, and further help alleviate the rising enrollment challenges that are coming. And we all know it's coming because I have a second grader, and apparently that class might be bigger than the sixth grade class that's here now. So without the additional space, we are going to have undoubtedly suffer the quality of the education that's going to be provided. I know the administrators do the best they can, and I think they're doing a great job, actually. But we all know that instruction and programs will suffer if we don't add that classroom space. And I don't think anybody wants that result, not the town, not the parents. And we all know that most people move here for the school system, and in order to continue that tradition of excellence, I urge you to adopt option 3A. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Janet Fawcett. I'm one of the co-presidents at West School PTC. I just want to say thank you for hearing me out here. I think it's important to understand that it's our future that we're talking about, and it's not about just performing arts. It's about the wave of the future. My son is not particularly Florence Arts-oriented. He quit violin after one year. He quit, he's now in a chorus, but I don't know if it's more painful for me or for him. And wouldn't it be nice for him to take another course? He loves science, but that opportunity is not there right now for him to take a STEM course after, during the curriculum, during the school year. So would it be great to have STEM part of the curriculum? That's what we're missing. And we can't do that now under the capacity constraints that we have now. And one of the things I just want to say here is that, you know, people come to New Canaan not because of the state-of-the-art town hall. They're here for the state-of-the-art school system. So I really would like common sense to overcome everyone's doubts about whether or not this should be done or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. So the next thing is our action item, the Saks Building Project. This is our second read of a motion that was first moved by Mr. Goodman and seconded by Ms. Sepp. Right?
Yep. It is my pleasure to introduce Mr. Penny to the podium to talk a little bit. As a non-voting member of the committee, I continue to be impressed and inspired by the dedication that Penny and Jen and the rest of the members of the committee have shown towards this project. I think that they've really been working very, very hard since the beginning of the school year to put together a meaningful, thoughtful, and data-driven analysis of the needs here at the school. And I think that, you know, in the first read, we saw some of that, and I think we'll hear a little bit more about that tonight and run through it also.
Great. I'm pleased to be here representing the Saks Building Committee again. And I'm not, I don't think Molly was here when we talked about it last week. If you are, sorry, Molly, but I just wanted to introduce the board of ed to Molly Lutzie, who's been a terrific member of the committee, and you know the other members. So tonight, we're here to ask the Board of Education to endorse a planning concept for the renovations at Saks to meet the current and anticipated needs of the students. Kent Orhart and Jean Corone are consultants. We'll have a short presentation, and then they're here to answer the questions you have about what they presented last week. But I wanted to update you all on some important developments. The Saks Building Committee has selected J C J Architecture as the project architect and is in the process of negotiating a contract and scope of work with them. J C J was the building committee's unanimous choice after a thorough selection process that included the issuance of a request for qualifications, followed by a request for proposal to the top candidates, and interviews of the project teams. J C J is one of, is Hartford-based, and they're one of the leading architects in Connecticut for educational projects. As you're aware, J C J, I think they were then called Jeter, Cook, and Jepson, were the project architect for the 1997 and 1999 Saks renovations and additions project. James Lapasta, who headed that project as a young architect, will also head this renovation project. Saks, he told me that Saks was actually a breakthrough project for him, and he is very excited to be able to work on the additions and renovations this time and committed to it. J C J, one of the points in their favor to the building committee was they had put together an excellent team, which included Jackie Holden for acoustics, Fisher Dax for theater, O L A for engineering, and D B S, security and consulting and engineering experts on safe school design. So we all look forward to working with J C J Architecture on this project. The other thing I wanted to advise you of is at the building committee meeting last Thursday, the Saks Building Committee voted to support option 3A, which fully renovates the auditorium as the small addition in the music wing, just off here, to better size those classrooms and provides needed storage for the auditorium and music program, and adds a two-story classroom addition to the northwest portion of the campus that provides 12 new classrooms and the relocated STEM classroom. The building committee felt this project met the needs identified by SLAM, provided enough new classrooms to meet growing enrollment without sacrificing program or class sizes, and puts students into appropriately sized classroom spaces. While the cost is significant, we think this option provides an efficient solution to the needs of the students at Saks and urge you to support it. Finally, tomorrow night, the Saks Building Committee at 7:30 PM at the Nature Center will be asking the Board of Finance for $750,000 in pre-construction funding for this project. This request, a copy of which you have, covers professional services needed to move the project forward, including architecture, engineering, legal, owners rep, environmental testing, construction manager, cost estimate, and cost estimated. Now, before Kent and Jean present, because enrollment is a key driver to this project, I've asked Dr. Lutzie to update you on sort of some of the latest enrollment projections. He will go into as much detail or as little detail as you want, but I can tell you, I've been telling everybody that the enrollment at Saks was 1292, which is what was the October 1, 2014 number. It is, it actually has increased 12 students since then, so we're already at over 1,300. We're at 1,304. So thank you for your consideration.
Sure. Thank you, Penny. And again, I'm happy to go into as much detail or as little as you like. You have a packet in front of you that has enrollment update, and if anyone has not picked it up, there are copies in the corner on the desk there. You'll want them too. To a sec, we should have plenty. And we'll have it on our website tomorrow morning as well, for anybody who'd like to be able to see. What you'll see, it's similar to the day that we've looked at before, but just talk a little bit because the, many of the decisions, as we talk about the need for this construction that's working at Saks, it is driven by enrollment. And, you know, when we're doing enrollment projections, they're just that, right? They're projections about the future based on the data that we have today and the historical analysis that we look at. So we've learned quite a bit over the last few months about these, the demographers' projections and how they put those together. Again, I'm happy to go into as much detail as you like, but the, I think, a couple of things that are important to note. If you look in the packet, the first page is the, again, is the historical enrollment. And all demographers, as they're putting together future projections, they begin by looking at our past enrollment, and they use what's called a cohort survival method as they put together their projections. Essentially what they're doing, they're looking for patterns and trends as students move from grade to grade. A straight-line projection would be if we had 300 students in first grade, we would have 300 students in second grade, that's a straight-line projection. But we know things don't work out that way. So what happens is over time, trends develop. And they provide us with 10 years of data, but as they dig into that data, they look to see what, how many years worth of historical data best informs the future going forward. And they make that determination based on the enrollment numbers, but also looking at things like housing starts, real estate transfers. They look at the local economy, the environment, and they look at other types of data that help them to make that determination. Our demographers have used, for the most part, a three-year trend in looking at our historical data, because they found that we've, in the three years, we can establish a consistent pattern as we're looking at, but if we go back as many as five years or more, then we're still factoring in some things, some data points that don't necessarily, don't necessarily relate to the environment anymore. What we've been doing is picking up some of the things from 2008, 2009, and some of that slowdown would be factoring in. And what they're saying is that those numbers really aren't relevant as we look forward because what we're seeing now is a consistent pattern of growth when we look at the housing sales and we look at new construction starts. There was an article even in the New York Times this past weekend that talked a bit about New Canaan, Westport, and Fairfield as three very desirable places, and the increase in the real estate and construction, new construction starts in all three of those towns. So the, as you look on, so the second page, the larger graph simply gives you the New Canaan enrollment since 1970. And what that enrollment would have looked like had it followed the state pattern is the black line that goes. And you can see, you've heard us talk a little bit about Connecticut, or Connecticut's trends taking somewhat downward, where New Canaan continues to increase. I think this shows it graphically how we have continued to increase as we've gone through. Our lows were a little bit lower than the state average would have had us, but our highs in the, over the last 20 years have been, well, not for, for 10 years, have been higher than the state's average would have brought us.
Right. You're in the graph page?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Do you have that on page two?
No.
Okay, so ignore that.
I don't have that page.
Okay. You'll have to take my work for it, but I'll put it on the website.
They're completely true.
So we go from historical to projected enrollment?
Got it. So that's the projected enrollment from Nezdek, N-E-S-D-E-C. And Nezdek, they've been doing enrollment projections for over 35 years. They do it for school districts all throughout New England. Dr. Kennedy himself does around 300 or so a year as he works through with his group. So these are people who've been doing this for a long time and been doing it well. So as you look at the Nezdek enrollment projection, it's, you can follow the, probably the most important is the smaller grid on the bottom left-hand corner of the page that gives you projected enrollment in grade combinations. So on October 1st, we had 1,292 students here at Saks. As Penny just mentioned, we've already gone up about a dozen.
Right.
Yep. But as you read that column down where it says 5 through 8, for specifically for Saks, you can see the trend in the numbers. And after 2019, 20, you see that there's a green line that runs across that box. That's because the, five years from now, the middle school enrollment is the most stable enrollment projection of all schools and all places because we know those students, they're coming from the elementary school, and while there can be some increase or decrease as they come here based on those trends, it's a, it's a very reliable number. If you flip the page, it will show you the Nezdek projected enrollment in those grade combinations, and just breaks that up a little bit for you to see how we come to our total numbers. And again, Saks is highlighted down that, down the Saks column. Another visual is the next page, which gives you a trend line essentially for us since 2004 going up through 2024. So it carries us 20 years, 10 years back and 10 years forward. You'll see the blue line is the Nezdek enrollment projection. We spoke also with another demographer, Peter Prouda, who put together some of his own projections for us, and then we had a point of comparison, because again, we realized how important this data is in the discussion, and we wanted to be sure, you know, sort of getting a second opinion. So Peter Prouda's number, the numbers are in the red, and you'll see that they trend very similarly all the way through, going forward the next 10 years. Both Prouda, Dr. Prouda and Dr. Kennedy, both say, of course, five years, despite we looked at the middle school five years, but all over, is the most accurate projection, and then there's more variability. And you see that even in the numbers as they trend together over the next five years and then go on. Specifically, if you turn the page, we have our Nezdek projected enrollments for the middle school specifically. And the actual, the 304, 370 across the top is as of October 1st, and then underneath it in parentheses is the actual enrollment this morning, as we took a look at it. And you'll see each grade is generally up a little bit. So as you go down, so if you look at the actual in grade 5, it's currently 305, right? And on October 1st, it was 304. If you go down to 2015, 16, and diagonally, you'll see that 304 was projected to go to 308 in second grade. The following year, you go diagonally, the 308 to 310, and then diagonally through, when they're in eighth grade in 2017, 18, would go to, from 310 to 304. Those little changes, those deltas from grade to grade, are that, that's the cohort survival method. That's them looking at the trends, looking at the environment, looking at the data, and making those predictions as far as, you know, students moving in or out of the district based on that history. So I hope that helps, let's just, let's say that piece of that. If you, again, I can slow down if I'm going too quick. If you flip that page, you'll see the Prouda projected enrollments, and you'll see that they, again, they trend very similarly going through these next five years for sure. He is another demographer. He's does, he's been doing this for, he's done it for Connecticut, the state of Connecticut. And actually, his analysis will help us as we go forward with the project. His analysis satisfies the requirement of the school facilities unit with the eight-year projections so that we're prepared for that as we go forward. I need to share that.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes. So looking specifically at Saks, the next page gives us the historical and the projected enrollments here in the building. And again, the blue line that runs through that page breaks it down between historical and projected. And you'll see that both Nezdek and Prouda track very, very similarly right up through 2019. And then there is a little bit of a change, and that has to do with the kindergarten piece, which I'll get to in just a moment. And that, of course, in any district, kindergarten is the most difficult grade to predict because they, well, they haven't started school yet. It's kindergarten is the most difficult to predict, and then ninth grade, interestingly, becomes also difficult to predict due to migration in or out of the school system. But it just, again, shows you that trend line. I think what's important to recognize on this sheet is over these last 20 years, when we talk about Saks, that Saks was designed for a capacity of 1,200 students. And this ground here will show you, 20 years, we're not expecting to be anywhere near 1,200 Now, of course, the accuracy of the projections are always a part of the discussion, and it's an important discussion to have. So we asked Nezdek to take a look back at the projections they've shared with us over the years so we can take a look at how far off they were as they've gone through. So what they did for us is give us the, the last 10 years, their projections, and then the actual projections at Saks Middle School. Again, as I mentioned, the middle school is the most accurate number to predict as they go through. But what it shows is really through the years, for the last 10 years, they've generally been within 99%, 99.5% accurate in their predictions of the middle school. Now, this is, this is a prediction one year out. So the prediction in 2002, 2003 was that we'd have this many, 1,306, and we had 1,303. So it's not 10 years' worth of predictions, it's a new prediction each year, but I think it still tells us that we can be fairly confident that they have a track record of some success in making these predictions. Now, the next page has the birth-to-kindergarten relationship, which, as I mentioned, is the most complex and can be the most difficult prediction for demographers to make. But what this shows you, what they essentially will do is they'll look at, they'll collect data on births each year in the town. And they get the data not necessarily from the town, but from the state, which gives them more accurate information. The town clerk has births of New Canaan children in Connecticut hospitals, but if they go to New York, for instance, that might not be registered. So that Nezdek goes through some extra steps to try to be more accurate in those total numbers of births. But what you'll see is that the dark blue line are the births, and you see as that's trending downward a bit for us in New Canaan. The blue line, however, with the boxes, those are our kindergarten enrollments five years later. So what they look to do is find the relationship between the number of births and your kindergarten enrollment five years later, and then develop a ratio for that. And it's that ratio that they use, and they also have other factors. They'll look again at, at housing and the environment, and then they look at percentage of students that go to public schools versus independent and private schools and things like. So they have other factors that apply to develop this ratio. They look to see what is that relationship. And so as you can see, it was relatively stable in the beginning as we go back to enrollments in 2004, 5, 6, 7. But in recent years, there, a gap has been developing between the number of births and the kindergarten enrollment, in that as our births have gone down, enrollment has at least stayed steady, and in some cases, it's ticked up. That was, that's difficult to predict for them, but now they're seeing this as a trend. It's, you know, one year, anything can happen in a single year, but as you see it occurring year after year, it develops a trend. And so that is part of the, their ratios as they're looking at the kindergarten enrollment.
Did they, did they mention anything about sort of a relationship between sort of more kindergartners coming in and sort of the economy where maybe fewer kids went to sort of the private schools and more were coming into the public schools? I mean, it's interesting that that divergence sort of starts to really show up in 2005.
They do look at the percentage of the population going to independent and private versus the public schools. We're relatively consistent. You know, we might be four or five students up or four or five students down, you know, as we go, just as a running average, but they haven't seen a significant difference in that in recent years. So that, that gap, that becomes the kindergarten ratio. And so when it, when it's 1.0, sometimes it's 1.0, you know, can be 1.2, we're looking at a much more significant, as you look at this year's kindergarten enrollment, where the births was below 150, but the enrollment was above 300. And so that's where, as we've spoken before about the need to hire kindergarten teachers this past year, you know, that took the demographers by surprise a little bit, it took us by surprise a little bit, and that has been factored into their, their adjustments going So the, the very last page just gives a, an overview of our K-12 enrollment, again, for the last 20 years. And it just shows you that consistency, right, and that slight upward trend that we've been talking about a bit and what we've seen. Of course, as they wrote in their memo to me, any responsible demographer would say K-12 enrollment really is not an important data point. What's more important is the first through eighth grade, looking at those, those grade school years prior to high school because of the variability there. So looking at what happens with your kindergarten, and then kindergarten through seventh, and then the next year, first through eighth, and are your numbers going up, are they going down year to year? What are those factors in between the grades? And both of them came back strongly that we're seeing increases as we go across those grades. I hope that's helpful, and I'm happy to take any other questions. So I'll repeat that. And I may retire and become a divine in 20 years. Oh, sure. So one of the things we looked at was to compare next year's kindergarten enrollment, where we are as far as trending data compared to where we were last year. Because we, so we looked in April to see where we were last year in April as far as the numbers go. We wanted to see are we up, are we down? Will that help us to predict where we may be when we come in the fall? And what we found was that we're within, I think, two students as where we were last year in April at this time, where, and we wound up, as you know, at about 304, I think it was in kindergarten. So we are running very similarly now in all, in April to where we were a year ago at this time as far as the enrollments go. Is that?
Thank you.
So I guess I'd ask Kent to take over from here. And maybe he has some slides to show, so perhaps the board of ed could move around, and you can look at the slides without doing your next.
My name is Kent Orhart. I think most of you know who I am. I presented for three times over the past few months. I'm here tonight to give a brief overview of what we discussed on the 27th last week. Seems like two weeks ago for me, but I believe it was just last week. So I can get into as much detail or as little detail as possible. I'm going to try to move forward quickly because we already discussed a lot of the details that support some of the summary slides I will show tonight. Penny went through this earlier, so I'm going to skip past that. Broad overview of what option 3 feasibility study did. Basically, option 3, the presentations for option 3 here are going to include auditorium, floor renovation of the auditorium, a addition to the music classroom area in this, in this area, and I think most of you know what that looks like, and also explored northwest quadrant of the school, two different addition scenarios in that area. Part of what we did was inventory the existing spaces to gain an understanding of where we are currently with the space in this building, and then, I'm not going to get into the details of all the tasks we went through, but the basic gist of what we did was to inventory and understand where we are, and then predict what we need based on the enrollment projections that Dr. Lutzie just went through, and come up with a concept for development. This is a new slide from, since last time. We had a chart that was not quite as nice-looking as this. It was trying to summarize all the instances throughout the building of where, over the course of 20 years, space has been co-opted, from its original, originally intended use in the 1997 addition to where it is today. And again, without going through all of these, you have some floor plans that I'm going to scan through, but one of the largest points is the, the loss of the team rooms that were originally designed as team rooms for collaboration of teachers, PPTs, teacher-parent meetings, and, and teacher meetings have mostly, or if not all, been co-opted for special-ed classrooms or other uses. Storage rooms have also been co-opted for special ed, and there are a few other instances of other, of other occurrences. I think another one to note is the use of corridor alcoves also as special ed, which is clearly not that appropriate, as well as other conference spaces converted to classrooms. Down here, the small band room used to be a conference room and so forth. So that kind of has occurred throughout the floor plans. This is how it lays out. I'm not going to go through it in detail, but you can see, it hasn't been located into just one area of the building. It's kind of found its way throughout, and that's just a means for the administration And they can flex even beyond that based on our guideline of 32 square feet per seat in those classrooms. In the science rooms, Saks operates on a slightly reduced model from what I'm used to seeing in some other middle schools, but the, the way they deliver their science curriculum has been tested and tried and true, and you have the best scores in the state, so it's working, so I'm not going to fight that. 41 net square feet per seat is that kind of benchmark to make that work, and we use that, and in using that value, we found that there were three rooms that are a little bit undersized, that, and we're going to talk a little bit about that in more detail in further into the presentation. Seating anywhere from 18 to 16 students, I think, is the tightest one, using that metric. So without getting into all of this, because I talked about it last time, the basic bottom line here is we found that, based on the enrollment projections for fifth grade, 16 classrooms are necessary. And based on the enrollment projections for six through eight, we looked at two different enrollment projection years. 17, '18, which I believe was 945 students in grade six through eight, and then the 20, '21 school year, which was over 1,000. I don't remember the exact number of these in previous slide in last week's presentation. But bottom line was, the, the classroom count required for those two years was 48 general classrooms, 12 science rooms for a total of 60, and then for the upper peak year, 52 general classrooms, 13 science rooms for a total of 65. And our recommendations were that, we felt that, that it would be, a comfortable number would be right down the middle of these two numbers, 16 and 65. So we, or actually, these two numbers, 48 and 52. So we, we recommended 50 regular classrooms, which is an increase of five from the existing. 12, it's also a nice number because you get 12 per grade, and then two shared general classrooms, and then 12 world language, again, which works very well with the teaming model. And then 12 science classrooms, which is a net zero increase from the existing current count, but as we mentioned earlier, there are three that are undersized, and we're going to deal with that in some of the concept planning a little bit further in. But for a total of 62 academic rooms in grade six through eight. We couldn't, we couldn't avoid realizing the special ed impact. As I mentioned earlier, many of the spaces, team rooms and so forth, have been co-opted for, for special ed uses, and it really wasn't that appropriate, and it's just a, there's a large pressure for special ed functions within the building that have compromised some of the other uses of those spaces. And then faculty support. Again, those team rooms, the faculty dining room is currently a science room for the fifth grade because it has a sink, and therefore, teachers have to either have lunch in their classrooms, or because they don't have team rooms, they can't eat together in a team environment without using another classroom or something like that, and they have no places for PPTs and parent meetings. Summarizing all the recommendations, fifth grade addition of two classrooms, addition of one science. The addition of the science will allow Dr. Dining space, Dr. D collaboration space to come back online as that function. Addition of five classrooms at six through eight level. And then we're recommending addition of four special ed classrooms. Generally, those special ed classrooms can be anywhere from 450 to 600 square feet. However, we're recommending that they be sized at the normal classroom size of 7 to 770. And the reason for that is to allow, when you build a new addition, to allow for special ed classrooms to be dispersed throughout the floor plate of the building rather than concentrated in one area. And also, you'll see when we get to the planning concepts, where we are proposing that you might break through the existing building with new corridors. A couple of existing classrooms may get impacted to be a little bit smaller, which then become nicely sized for special ed. And then, and because you're taking those offline, those existing classrooms offline, you need to replace them with a full-size classroom. Then faculty support, basically, we're, we're looking to reclaim as much as possible. It's not reclaiming everything that's been corrupted over the years, but reclaiming a fair amount. The faculty dining we talked about, and the four team rooms, we talked about as well. Obviously, we can't forget about the auditorium. That's kind of where this whole thing started. A brief summary of the existing auditorium, it was, it was left out of the 1997 renovation. Without going through all the details on this slide, it's, it's in need of full renovation. All the HBC systems are beyond their useful life, the lighting systems and so forth. It needs some acoustic improvements, it needs, the fly space and the rigging needs to be improved, there's some improvements there, and the list goes on. All of that will be addressed with this Option 3A or 3B as we're going to present. As we went through that programming effort and inventory in this space, this was back in the fall of 2014, when our, our focus was primarily the auditorium and the music spaces. We interviewed a lot of students, or not students, a lot of faculty, a lot of administration and so forth, and developed a recommendation for space in this area. We weighed that against the existing. So you've got a column for existing and recommend it, and you see that there's about a 5,000 square foot or so differential from where you, where you currently are, where we recommend you be. In Option 3, that I'm going to show in a second, we've gone through a few different iterations on how that might lay out, and we, and many of you have seen the Option 2 that we presented last time and in previous presentations as one option. Option 3 is a different option, and it's just short by about 1500 square feet of, of our recommendation, but it's a substantial addition to what you currently have to address those needs. This is how Option 3 lays out in the music wing. Auditorium, full renovation. The proposal of a new choral group performance room in the southwest corner of the site of about, well, it's 20, 300 square foot classroom addition. As part of that, a stage storage room becomes, gets developed in this corner, a small chair storage that's adjacent to the choral room, because you can see we have a lot of chairs in choral, that we want to be able to have flexibility of use for that space rather than just be a choral room. We can give an opportunity to put the chairs into a storage space that can then become another group performance room such as history metal, or, or dance, or drama. It's a drama program type space. We also, we're all in this room right here, right now. The proposal is to break down that wall and expand this room into the existing art room, and make that into another group performance classroom for band. That existing art room will get relocated to the current STEM room across the hall, and then the STEM will go to the new proposed addition in the northwest corner. To address orchestra, orchestra is currently in this location, and it's a little, it's quite a bit undersized, it's about 900 square feet. We've recommended 24. We're recommending to move that to the existing band room, which is about 1500 square feet. So it's a substantial increase to that, to that classroom, not quite where we had recommended, but I think it'll, it'll work. And I'll talk about the seat count in a minute, how that's affected. Small choral room is currently here and is planned to stay here. There's currently a general music classroom in this corner. That is being changed to a combined instrument storage space for both band and orchestra. So it's kind of centrally located between these two. And that general music classroom then gets moved into the existing orchestra room, which then increases the size of that. And small band remains where it is. We're proposing a smaller music office be added in some of that existing lotty space, which, there's a column here, so it's kind of a nice little niche corner where you can make that happen. And that summarizes the, the additions for that music area and what we're proposing for that. The affected area, we talked about this before, auditorium and stage of about 8,200 square feet of renovations, light renovations around the perimeter and so forth, and, and some of these spaces, this space and then these here, would have some light renovation of about 6,000 square feet. Moderate renovation to break down that wall and modify this build, this room into a band room, and then new construction of about 3,300 gross square feet for the choral room. Yields about a 20,000 square foot total affected area in this corner of the building. Seat count, this is a seat capacity count for the music wing only, not for the whole building. This is something that, the chart that was developed earlier on in our study. This, this bar, this bar represents what your, Saks is currently putting into these music spaces as they're currently deployed throughout the floor plan. This bar represents the capacity of those rooms based on those state, based on the benchmark standards of 32 square foot per seat for group instrumental classrooms, and then 25 net square feet per seat for a choral room. So really putting a lot of kids into spaces that are not large enough to support their needs. Option 2, as presented a while back, had a capacity of 338. That was a more substantial addition on this side of the building where we were building three new, larger group performing, performance spaces. Would have given you about a 338 seat capacity. Option 3A, as just presented, is about a 287 seat capacity. The largest hit there is, is that orchestra room, as I mentioned earlier, because we moved, we did move it from the 900 square foot room that it's in now to a 1500 square foot room, but it really can always, can support 50 students, not 75, which was what was discussed at least during the early part of our study. So that was really the, the one space that was making the rent of it. However, because you have, you had a storage space, currently that room has instruments stored all the way around the perimeter of the room, which crowds the space. It's one. Any questions on this? And I've already gone through all of this, this is just in words what I just said. Planning concepts for the northwest corner, there's an aerial of the northwest corner. This is a two-story portion of the building. This is primarily seven evening right now. Single-story portion, main entrance is over here. We've got a few trees here and some other drainage lines that have been relocated as part of any construction in there, but primarily, this is the best area on site to, to develop. The best area and probably the last area on, on this site that's capable of being developed. Option 3A is the two-story scheme of 12 classrooms plus STEM, we call it, where this is the lower level. The proposal is to break through, there's an existing classroom, break through here and have the corridor made up with this corridor system, create a loop corridor that makes up here going through an existing stairwell on this side. That stairwell would be relocated here, and it would have to be increased in size to accommodate the load, but easily, easily enough done when you're building it in. On the lower level, we have boys' and girls' toilets, and seven classrooms plus a storage room. It's a good idea to put a little bit of storage to support these classrooms in the, in the floor plan. On the upper level, one change from what we presented on the 27th is, is in this vicinity, we had a normal, regular-sized classroom here with a storage room, and as we talked about it over the past week, to, to improve the way we could deploy teams into this new addition, it seemed to be better to create two new science, science slash STEM rooms. There's the relocated STEM room from the music wing. And then, that also helps address that, at least one of those small science rooms that we talked about earlier, where the smaller science room can then be converted to a classroom, normal classroom, and this takes the place of it. So it helps address that issue as well. And then three more normal-sized classrooms fill out that floor plate, and we also have toilets on the, on the upper level as well. Total square footage for this scheme is about 22,500 square feet, just under. But it's a great scheme because it allows for that loop circulation and creates a little courtyard, so all these classrooms continue to get light. And it works fairly well on site, being of some impact to this ground alignment, but relatively minor, so it works fairly well. And this is just a concept, it's not a design. The architect, as, you know, as Penny mentioned earlier, the architect that's been hired for the, design of the project will develop these into designs to, to address all of the issues that need to be addressed. Option 3A meets most of the needs, provides the recommended number of science classrooms and general classrooms, provides the special ed spaces, and reclaims those, those other co-opted spaces that have been taken offline for other purposes. You'll have the remaining, two existing science rooms that remain slightly undersized, but have been able to be worked with in, in the past, so that will continue. And some other things that are currently in, in locations that may not be optimal will, will remain, but I think it's a reasonable approach. We did look at another option, a single-story option, because we wanted to take a little bit more of a frugal approach on what we might look at. This is a single-story option that, again, has that loop circulation. It breaks through an existing classroom on both sides rather than interfering with the stair, because it's only a single-story option. We don't want to disrupt the stair that goes up two stories. We can't, we need to keep it for egress. And we, we do continue with that loop circulation, and we, and we do get a STEM, relocated STEM room, and then one STEM in science, and fill out the floor plate with six other classrooms. And we were also able to get some toilets in there as well, which we recommend because they increase the student load. That's about a 12,000 square foot addition, single story. And it has about the same impact on site. Would also require a little bit of reorientation on that road. We call this, that meets some of the needs, provides the recommended number of science classrooms and one fewer of, of the recommended general classrooms. It does reclaim that faculty dining room because we're able to provide that, that science room, but what it doesn't do for us is it excludes the recommended special ed spaces that we had recommended, and therefore, you can't reclaim those team rooms necessarily in the same fashion. And similarly, the, the special ed classrooms that are classes that are being taught in alcoves probably continue that way. So it has some drawbacks. So now, Penny, let's talk to you about the fun stuff.
Okay, just, the first set of costs is
It breaks through an existing classroom on both sides rather than interfering with the stair because it's only a single-story option. We don't want to disrupt the stair that goes up two stories. We can't, we need to keep it for egress. And we do continue with that loop circulation. And we do get a relocated STEM room and then one STEM in science and fill out the floor plate with six other classrooms. And we were also able to get some toilets in there as well, which we recommend because they increased the student load. That's about a twelve thousand square foot addition, single story. And it has about the same impact on site. Would also require a little bit of reorientation on that road. We call this, that meets some of the needs. Provides the recommended number of science classrooms and one fewer of the recommended general classrooms. It does reclaim that faculty dining room because we're able to provide that at a science room. But what it doesn't do for us is it excludes the recommended special ed spaces that we had recommended. And therefore, you can't reclaim those team rooms necessarily in the same fashion. And similarly, the special ed classrooms or classes that are being taught in outboats probably continue that way. So it has some drawbacks. So now, Penny, let's talk about the fun stuff.
Okay, just the first set of costs is the auditorium, the expanded classroom for music, as Ken pointed out earlier. So...
If you click on it, the mouse can drag it up.
Hey, there you go. So originally, we had, that original option that was presented was about a five million dollar... This was just the auditorium that we talked about, about five million dollars. So we took the expanded music classrooms, as Ken pointed out, with the heavy renovation in the choral band room that ran down and basically scaled down. We did add an office over in the corner here and relocated some of the other spaces, which would be about twenty thousand square feet. So that dramatically brought the cost down. So we're just talking about about two million dollars for that portion of it. So I think that was a good compromise.
Actually, Penny, how does it... I don't know if you want questions now or we're gonna save it up. How does the cost of new renovation compare, new construction compared to renovation, both moderate and mine?
Yeah, the three scales, then, minor renovation is basically interior renovation. We're not really doing extensive demolition. HVAC systems and mechanical systems are intact. We're just kind of relocating the fusers and air circulation. Electrical systems are just relocated and adding panels. So any of the major infrastructure is in place. The next level we call moderate.
So are you giving a dollar per square foot estimate on that kind of renovation?
That's, I mean, it really depends on what you're doing. But usually that can go from eighty to, you know, a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. The next level we call moderate really involves demolition, structural. It involves usually some infrastructure improvements, mechanical, electrical systems. It involves potentially, you know, penetration. And that's, so that ratchets up. And that obviously has a much greater range, but still less than a new construction. New construction, you're talking about foundations and site work getting included in there. Complete new mechanical, electrical systems to support the new space. And then, so you can take those levels and just ratchet them up maybe four or five hundred square foot.
And so four to five hundred for new, which is, which is good because your numbers break out to about four hundred and thirty-eight, something like that. So, but the moderate renovation, where you have to do real structural work and things like that, where do you think that falls?
It's, I guess, for this project, it's probably in the two fifty range. So the next one we looked at was the twelve classroom addition. And obviously, there's extensive site work involved in this. There's, we carried money for the minor renovation, or moderate renovations that we were doing here. So you have a blended rate here. We've got, we're touching the building, so we have to deal with some demolition. We have a stairwell relocation that has to get put over here. And then we factor in the cost of new construction as well. So the construction cost really relates to the six point two and the one point three. So you're talking about seven point five million dollars in construction costs. And that should be what the cost per square foot is based off of. And then you factor in your soft costs, which are all the things, AEPs and FFNE. We figured money for furniture, equipment, spaces, and then there's continuity as well. So the schedule, again, we're just, the reason why we want to show this because it just gives you a general idea of the extent of the work. You know, this can start in a summer and end at the end of the following summer. So the project would be phased because we can't relocate STEM until we really have the addition finished. So the idea is that you would build a classroom wing and do the auditorium the first summer. Surely thereafter, the auditorium will be finished. The twelve classroom addition will run probably nine or ten months. The following summer, you start the finishing of the classroom addition on the music space. We'd probably go ahead and start the foundation work that same summer, the first summer, and do some of that work that doesn't interrupt the current choral work. So that's about thirteen months. And we do that because we need to understand, one, how's that affect the cost? How's the general contractor approach this project? So that fee, those fees and the way that the project is approached is also figured into the numbers as well.
Can I just ask a question on the timeline? The current sixth grade is the largest grade currently in the middle school at three seventy-five. Is there any way to expedite that timeframe so that they can, so the addition can be completed before their eighth grade year? Because that's a big bubble moving through. And when we talk about the need for this project, it actually is to... I mean, that class is a big part of the need. So I'm just wondering how, if there's a way we can expedite that timeline? Because you're talking about it not getting done till eighteen, nineteen? Seventeen, eighteen?
The approach right now is to start it in the summer of sixteen. And it would be done by the fall of seventeen. So the seventeen, eighteen school year will have...
So the current sixth grade would be in eighth grade. So is it, I'm just thinking, no. So we're missing that, wouldn't we?
But that's not actually the peak of the enrollment here at SACS. Even though it's the largest grade. The other grades behind it are large enough that the enrollment continues to go up even.
I understand that, but it's not as helpful as it could be? I mean, so I guess my question is, is there any way to expedite that timeframe?
I mean, there's always a way. But you're gonna take that on a burden and probably add a few edges to it. So there's plenty of contractors that can accelerate this construction. But besides the cost, there's the destruction and potential safety issues in the construction during the school year. So we have to really look at that to see how we're affected by it. And the other thing that's kind of driving a lot of this is just the regulatory approval process. It just takes time.
Right. And I understand the regulatory approval process, but I, without being a construction expert, I mean, like, why can't, I mean, the auditorium and that northwest wing are separate. So why can't we start that northwest wing in the summer of sixteen?
Yeah, you will. You would start the, you would start to go.
But, I mean, have that usable classroom space for the fall of sixteen.
The, one of the ways to advance it is to start the constructions during the spring of sixteen. Potential, yes. So that you would break around during the school year. So it just becomes, you have to weigh that pros and cons of doing that. There's equipment out there, you're doing holes, you're digging holes, it's gonna be loud, it's banging. How's that affect curriculum? So that, that's really the challenge of doing it sooner. The idea for us is to try to get as much of the heavy, nasty, dirty, noisy work done during the summer so that you're kind of in a box after that and it becomes less destructive in that term. So, yes, there's a way. But if it's something that you're serious about, the community wants to pursue that, we can look at that and analyze it and come with some pros and cons from that so you guys can make a better organization of it. So what would that do for you? It'd probably get you in the spring semester of the school year. I think it would be the sixteen, seventeen school year. So probably a semester early. That would be the best. The answer you want to hear.
No, I mean, it is though. For me personally, I would want to see you follow up on that and look at that scenario. Because, again, that current sixth grade is a big bubble. And if we're gonna move forward with this addition, it would be very helpful to have the addition to address that bubble.
Great. Any other questions? Yeah, we talked about before, you know, how that, you know, we continue saying that we had each of those, which, you know, we want to run about ten percent because of the blended renovation having run out of new construction. I guess we answered all the questions. Any other questions? Okay, all right.
I guess I just wanted to point out, maybe Eugene isn't sure here. I don't think we picked up the slide giving the cost of the seven classroom plus STEM. Just the seven classroom option. Maybe you flipped through it.
It's covered in the last chart. It's covered in that one.
The next one. Amy's done the next one.
There's one that gives the, oh, is it six point two? Okay, the nine point six. Okay, maybe, sorry. They're both there.
We need price, I don't think we have this slide yet.
I don't think you have this slide or the three B, is what I was saying. I didn't see, but you have that in prior presentations.
The last one's there. The last, it's, the information's on the last one.
Yeah, we can just, I just wanted you to say that.
It's on the last chart. It's on the last chart.
It's on the last chart. It ends up being thirteen million. It's that addition is in the, that addition is in the five million range, is what that was.
Yeah, it's sexless, just about four.
Again, these numbers are all based on kind of a one-project scenario. Two years.
Three B, five point eight.
Totally. So we're happy to answer any more questions?
Yes, sir.
You can move back to your seats anywhere.
All right. I see our chair, a woman has joined us. Oh, sure. All right. Penny, do you have anything that you wanted to add to the presentation that we've seen?
I guess the only thing I would say is I know that this has been a journey. It's certainly been a journey for the SACS building committee. And I think it's been a journey for the town. But these are real needs for real students and for the additional students that are coming. And so even if the timing might not be what everybody would have wanted here, I think that we started this discussion because the last thing that we wanted to do was do a building project at SACS, have it approved by the town bodies, and then come back a year later or two years later and say, guess what? We need portables. And so I'm very thankful to the Board of Selectmen, who we, I guess, casted us as the SACS building committee and approved the contract for SLAM to do this work. I think that that was tremendous support. So that we now have the data out there, and I think that the town can make, you know, a decision based upon it. So I'm in favor of three A. I think it meets the needs of the students and doesn't leave anybody out and is a kind of a reasonable expenditure for the town, even though I recognize it is a high number. I guess the last thing I'd say, if you look at, and I think Amy Carroll has done this because she's on our committee, she's on the Board of Finance, if you look at the debt levels, most of the, I think all of the SACS debt has basically rolled off for this project, or shortly will. So while it feels like we just addressed SACS, it really has been almost twenty years. And so I think it's time to address it again. So thank you.
So I guess I would open it up to anyone on the board that has comments or questions in general. Okay?
Sure. I just wanted to start by saying I support three A and also to thank the building committee for their extensive work on this. And really, after putting a lot of thought and review into all of the work, which is a collaborative, crosstown body committee, and to hear that they have approved and recommended option three A, I would like to say that I support their recommendation. Also, I wanted to say that I have received many emails from parents who support the twelve classroom expansion. Unfortunately, I think we scheduled today's meeting at a time that was difficult for parents to make. So I just wanted to read, I received many emails, but this one happens to be from Katie Owsley, who is the SACS PTC co-president. She says a lot of things. She supports the twelve classroom SACS expansion. There's just a quick thing here. As you know, SACS enrollment is currently over-constantly growing. Parents have regaled me with stories of classes grouping together in hallways and rehearsals being held in closets. Simply put, more space is desperately needed. Portables, in addition to being a significant expense, would reflect poorly on the town's willingness to support its school system and burgeoning youth population. Parents, when presented with the possibility of portables, have been dismayed, disappointed, and even angry. So I just wanted to, again, because this meeting to make public comment was difficult for many parents to attend, I wanted to read that statement of support. I've received many others. And just to say I support option three A.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I agree with what the chair is saying, that this has been a great collaborative effort. And I think what's wonderful is that, you know, we've gotten information and really seeked out to get data that can support the conclusions that's being presented. We had an objective person looking at what the classroom needs were. We did, the building committee did the next job of reaching out to administrators, to teachers, you know, looking across the community what the real needs were and determining. So it's not some arbitrary number that we just wanted a certain class expansion. But then we looked at, this is what we need in order to be accommodated to the type of education they want provided for our students. And so I too agree with the three A option because that is the one that seems to best fulfill what, to match the needs that are present right now and will be for the next, you know, coming years. So again, I want to feel commend that we are looking at this very programmatically, you know, looking at, you know, data that really supports the conclusions.
Yes?
I'm just gonna say, again, thank you to the committee. We have, we're so lucky as a community to have such talented people who are willing to volunteer thousands of hours of their time for a wonderful cause like this. I think they've done a fabulous job. I think the needs are obvious, they're apparent, they've been proven. I think you guys have done a tremendous amount and a tremendous job with due diligence of every aspect and looking at this very thoroughly. We're sitting in a school, looking at renovating a school that was already under-built by the time the previous renovation started, or finished, rather. And not for any fault of the committee, I'm sure we had a wonderfully talented committee there too. And I'm sure they had economic pressures put on them to minimize the project they did. And we're paying a little bit for that now. So I can't imagine why we would want to repeat that again in the same building. I think we just built a beautiful town hall in town, and there was certainly no discussion in terms of underbuilding that. I think if anything, when I sat in some of those meetings about that building, the discussion really from members of the town, members of the community, was, again, to build it once, build it well, build it right, and build it for the future. So I think there was some additional square footage you can put into that building, certain departments, for some potentially anticipated increase in usage in the future. So I think we should take the same outlook with that and build the same way. I don't think parents are ever going to value education less than they do now. I think people are only gonna value education more in the future. I think it's been stated over and over again that people move to this community for the education. Hopefully, the community will continue to invest their communication into education and value education the way it always has, and I feel confident that it will. So I agree, I think three A is the way to go. I don't think we ever want to look back at this and say, what were we thinking? Or what was the committee thinking, or what was the Board of Ed thinking? Let's do this well. I would be interested in seeing, in terms of the differential between the twelve classroom and the seven classroom, it's four million, five million, what's the difference that you go through? Four, roughly? So we're bonding that as a town, so if we're looking at three point eight, right? If we're looking at three point eight million bonded over twenty years, what's that expense to each individual taxpayer in this town? My guess is relatively insignificant versus the, if we make a decision to underbuild, what the cost of the town is gonna be if we can't deliver a quality... if we can't deliver a quality education to our children, especially with surrounding, you know, communities? We have to be realistic about this. We're in competition with surrounding towns. You know, this is what we do. And we've always done extremely well. And I hope we continue to do extremely well. It's a town of very well-educated people who want their children to be very well-educated also. So I, you know, I totally with 3A. I think that's absolutely the way to go. And I firmly believe it is the only way to go.
Anybody else?
So I also want to thank Penny and the whole Building Committee team. They've done just tremendous job, very thorough. I look at these enrollment numbers and the percent accuracy that we've been given by demographers and just knowing that these kids are going to be coming to our schools. And, you know, I, again, I always say this, I grew up here. And the fact that Center School is taken down, like, I just keep thinking about that decision and what it has done to us now. I mean, I've got all the fifth graders here, and all the elementary schools are packed to the gills. There is no place for these kids to go. So Saks is where we need the space. And we, like, we've got to do this auditorium. And I just... We... I'm just fully in support of doing it and doing it right.
I, again, I think we all want to compliment the committee. I mean, I know how much time you put in. But I also want to highlight that this is not building the Taj Mahal. You know, there were sacrifices made in this 3A that, you know... You know, as a parent, my children are through Saks, but I would have loved to have seen a much larger music and theater wing. Because I think there's programming that is not... still not here in the middle school in that area. And there's, you know, science that shows how important music education is. Even to, you know, we're pushing STEM, and music is directly related to mathematical learning. So, you know, I want people to understand, we are not putting, you know, a gold, you know, ribbon around this. This is, you know, a moderate renovation. And I still go back to being at that Board of Finance meeting where two members of the Board of Finance said, "Do not come back to us with something that doesn't look to the future and build what we need going out." Because they know that bond rates are low. They know that this is the time to do this kind of project. And, you know, I think we all want to be strategic and say, "You know what? Let's do this for the community in an effective way and really, you know, do this for our kids."
Sure. It's been a real privilege to have been on the Building Committee and I look to the leadership that Penny has had for this. And the work that's gone into the background of this, all of the meetings, and as people have said, hours and hours of meetings that have gone on, has been extremely thorough. From the assessment, from the looking at what we have, going in and trying to find out what we needed, to the exact measurement, how much does a student take up? If they're holding a different instrument in the music rooms? How much a child needs... A student needs to be sitting in a classroom? The square footage that they need? I mean, the detail of it is beyond belief unless you've looked at it. And to know that that analysis has gone in prior to making the recommendation should make people feel very confident. SLAM has done a terrific job of this. And the detail, as I say, is tremendous and helpful to those of us that are trying to say, "Well, how many students can you squeeze into a classroom?" And saying, "Wait a minute, not if you're holding this instrument." So that those kinds of questions and specifics about the bathrooms and about what we should be doing with the bathrooms, the stairs, everything about the whole process has been very professional. And I think that people in Ucanet should feel confident that that has in fact taken place. Those of you that have seen the presentations have seen what we have seen and can understand why we're making these recommendations. I think that the big points that people have been bringing out, the idea that the general conditions, that if we do this together, all of the projects, then there is a savings, a tremendous savings on that. We've heard about the bonds and about this being a time to do this, really fortuitous, that it happened coincidentally at the same time. And most importantly, the students are here. And they're also waiting in the elementary schools to come right in to those students that are here that will move on. So we're not just doing this for an overnight thing. The demographers have gone back and forth as part of this analysis, not back and forth on any change in their figures, but have spoken to us and answered our questions repeatedly as we keep bringing out new points. No, no. And they bring us back to the data. So we can say with confidence, and I feel that it is something that we should feel strongly and understand about, that this is the time and it should be done now.
I had a couple of sort of comments or questions. Some of these things I've been discussing with the administration throughout the past couple of weeks. And am very satisfied with the answers, but I think they're important to bring forward. One of the things that occurred to me was, if we're going to be spending a tremendous amount of money, perhaps this was the opportunity to move the fifth grade back to the elementary schools. And if we're going to spend, you know, more than $10 million in construction cost, we could do a project in each of the elementaries as well and maybe a little bit like that. So I asked Dr. Lutsi and Dr. Karanti, from an educational standpoint, what was the proper thing to do? And I just thought it'd be great if you'd share what you... What's your sort of thoughts and findings were.
Sure, I'm happy to. And Dr. Karanti and Mr. Cass are both here also. If they want to jump in, you're certainly welcome to. The three of us had an opportunity to meet with our elementary school principals and with Dr. Clapp, who's our fifth-grade administrator, to have a discussion about that idea. And the first thing we looked at was space and capacity at the elementary schools. And as, you know, we've heard tonight, the elementary schools don't have extra capacities, we know. They're running full or close to full. So such a move would necessitate doing construction or additional building in each of the sites. We did talk a little bit about the footprint. Is there... Is the space available in those locations? And the principals weren't confident that it was. But then we got into... And we talked a bit about the programs themselves. And the feeling really with the principals and with Dr. Clapp and Dr. Karanti, Mr. Cass, and I all there was that the program we have now for our fifth grade truly is excellent. That it's... The way that Mr. Macedo and his team have structured the fifth grade to be small, two-person, two-teacher teams for those students as they come up provides a system of transition and graduation... Gradual release in a way for those students as they go from the individually taught, self-contained classroom into those two-teacher teams here at our fifth grade. And the way that the building is structured and continues to be really does enable it to operate as an upper school and a lower school. Two very separate and distinct schools for those students as they move through the building into those things. So we looked at the programming beyond that and the curriculum that's available to them. Felt... Everyone there felt strongly that the opportunities that the fifth-grade students have here at Saks around the visual performing arts, around the... All the specials, around the extracurricular things, other things that they have, and they were invited to participate in, really provided a richer educational experience for those students. So I feel confident that the model that we have in our fifth, sixth, and eighth grade here at Saks is providing excellent education for our students.
I mean, no, I think the only other addition is the increase in science. So they do have an increase in fifth grade when they move from fourth grade to fifth grade, where they have that opportunity to have not only a language arts teacher and a social studies math teacher, but also a science teacher. And they meet with that science teacher daily.
The other thing that occurred to me is, as we move to a six-day rotation coming up, that's going to change... It's not going to change much to do with regular classrooms, but it's going to have a profound effect on the specials. And so Greg, if you could kind of just talk to us a little bit about what that effect is? And is it a diminution of number of students in a class? And are we planning, you know... Are we overplanning, given the six-day rotation?
I wish I could say that we would get some benefit from that with regard to space, but it's really a space-neutral operation. We're going to the six-day rotation in order to accommodate the increase in enrollment. So if you think about it simply in a five-day week, my PE, music, and art teachers teach 28 classes in a week. So we're keeping that same ratio of how many periods they teach per day and just adding a day to their schedule. So on a six-day rotation, they'll have 33 classes. So what does that mean for a student? You go to PE, art, and music twice a week in the six-day rotation. So if in 28 classes, there are actually 14 sections of students going twice. So this will now allow us to grow to approximately 17 sections per teacher. So the addition of three sections, if you put 20 kids in a class, there's 60 kids. That's the new enrollment, almost, for next year. So unfortunately, the benefits of the six-day rotation are going to expire literally in about a year. So it buys us time, but that's all it does.
The other thought that I had was, and I'm very, very pleased with both the work that the committee did and the conclusions that they came to, for the most part. The addition of the 12 classrooms, I think, is urgent. The option to move to seven classrooms and continue to have special education take place in revamped corridors, I think, is not one that we would be proud of. And I think one that we should stay away from. So to me, the 12-classroom addition is sort of a no-brainer. Given the cost of new construction being as high as it is, one of the things I'd like, at least for J C J to look at going forward and maybe in collaboration with SLAM, is to see if we said to ourselves, for this corner of the building, we didn't expand the footprint. We just looked to renovate because the cost of renovation is less. There is a computer lab, there's a storage facility. Is there a way to look at that differently and save the town a tremendous amount of money? If it doesn't save a tremendous amount of money, then it doesn't make sense. But if your committee going forward would at least take a look and say, "What would it look like if we didn't expand the footprint to the southwest corner, but instead moved some things around? Couldn't we get by and save money?"
Wait, wait, wait. What? Is that the space right here, right? Is that the space? That's the space right here. You know, one thing I did ask... I mean, we can... If the community wants us to do that, we can do that, Scott. I guess I did ask Jean, and maybe you could address it, in terms of, I think you still have the need for the space, so you would have to have a bigger addition in the 12-classroom addition to accommodate the need. And so I asked Jean, was there... If you could compare the cost of building in this corner versus the cost of building northwest? Are the costs of building new about the same here as the northwest? Are they less? Are they more? When you put that through, maybe you can stand up.
Penny asked me, you know, there's new construction, there's new construction. So it's really what you're putting in the box that costs money. So if you're building science, you're building bathrooms, those are the expensive components of any... You might have renovation to the house, your living room. But soon as you touch your bathroom, psh, all the costs go up. So the plumbing, the underground work that has to get done for all that, ventilation for the science classroom, that's what raises the cost to a higher level. If you're building literally a box for music, it's four walls. There's not a lot in that box. So that cost per square foot, even though it's new construction, is relatively low compared to what you would spend on this classroom expansion because of that additional, those components. So there's... There's a... This isn't an expensive addition, even though it's new construction.
I just think that you could make a case, looking at some of the designs that we've seen, whereby you have a lot of storage space in and around here in little bits and pieces. And I don't know if it's possible to reconfigure the 20-something-hundred-square feet of storage into something else.
Yeah. But that's what, if you go back, that's kind of started the whole discussion about expansion because there was no space available without sacrificing current programs just to deal with the auditorium. And I think that's where we started looking into the, you know, the music performing arts, where that also had a constraint. So it's a balloon. You swish it here, it's going to pop up here. It's... The space just isn't there. So I don't think, without sacrificing programmatic needs, you're going to be able to do anything within this existing structure.
I think, Scott, I think it's fair we will ask the new architect the right questions and let them give their opinion on it.
Yes.
And give another set of eyes on the job.
Right.
So just to that point, that from my understanding was for these spaces, the need to actually have is that our current rooms... I mean, there's no places pushed. I've taken the STEM room out and just lent it a little bit. But these are not sufficient for the moment that's coming in. Like, you can't get the choir room to fit in the choir room right now. So where is that going to go? Where's the extra... So you can't make the rooms, you know... So if you make one more room bigger, then where's the band room? And even the band room we have right now is not big enough to accommodate a band. So we're missing that one extra space. So you're going to have to add it either here or you're going to have to add it over on the other side. So you're not going to get away from that one extra space.
Well, there's a computer lab over here.
But then we can't have that computer lab for other things because later on you might want to do programs that have... To work with computers and teaching and software and, you know... So you limit again programming.
Right, I'm not suggesting get rid of it. I'm... That could perhaps become part of the 12-classroom addition. I don't know. I'd just like to know that we looked at, if renovation is half the price of construction, that we looked at renovating more and constructing less and made sure that we were optimizing that. That's all.
Just have one comment on that. I think we went through quite a few iterations in this area of the building, and some of which you didn't even see.
I'm sure.
And as Cynthia just mentioned, you know, there's a certain demand for a certain size space that you may not be able to... Even with moderate renovations, you may not be able to find in the existing footprint. I'm not saying that it's not there. You might be able to. We didn't look that deeply past certain programmatic spaces that are currently being used as art rooms, for example. And we didn't want to disrupt any of that. But also, if you recall, Option... I guess it was Option 2. I get it makes up on my head sometimes. But Option 2 did try to address additional classrooms in this area. And one thing that, you know, I think people reacted to was that trying to address that need for classrooms in an area of the music wing for general classrooms didn't really make a lot of sense. And so vice versa is also true.
Yeah, no, I'm not trying to suggest we move the trombone section over to the...
Oh, I know you're not. I know you're not. So, you know, I just wanted to offer that. But I think it can be looked at.
Just one thing I want to mention is, and actually you touched on this earlier, but in terms of moving forward, just keeping an eye on flexibility of the space. And you already addressed that, so I know you already are. But I think we've really benefited in previous projects by having that, building that flexibility because none of us know what education's really going to look like 10, 20, 30, 40, 50, hopefully more years down the road. So to have that flexibility built in the space is obviously going to benefit, you know, benefit the community and make this a better investment for the community. And I know, I think, when we built the high school, Penny, correct me if I'm wrong, but there was some question whether we need the gym, the auxiliary gym. There was some question, I think, in terms of the Wagner Room. You know, do we really need to build that kind of space into it? Well, they can't get into the Wagner Room, and you can't get into the auxiliary gym because they're so fully utilized. So having that eye on kind of the future and the unknown. You know, we talked a little bit about the unknown with the enrollment numbers. I mean, we have some idea, but they are kind of estimates or guesstimates. And it's the same thing in terms of what education's going to look like down the road. So obviously, we'll be better suited if we can build more flexibility into space. And I know you agree with that.
So my last question is a much different natured one. We're going to vote tonight to approve Option 3A. We're not... Sorry?
We're to not approve it.
We're to not... We're going to vote on approving it. So we're not really looking to... We're not asking the town... The Board of Education doesn't ask the town for the specific $750,000 that you're looking for at the next step because you're now a town committee, is that correct?
That's correct. I'm hoping you're going to say right now.
Cheek to cheek. All right. Any other questions, thoughts?
Someone's asked us, so tomorrow night... So I know tomorrow morning we're having our parent law meeting
parent form meeting to just inform parents, et cetera, more about this project, but tomorrow night, what exactly are we, you're going to present, what we approve tonight? In turn?
Yes.
We're asking for the $750,000. What are we asking for tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night, we're going to present the planning solution regardless of which option you all pick. We're going to present, just so that, because it presents, it tells a story. We'll say what option the Board of Ed voted for. And the main action item will be that we will be asking the Board of Finance for $750,000 in pre-construction funds to cover all the design and professional services that we need to take this project through bidding. And that's, so that's what we'll be asking for because we were given $175,000 with the seed money when we started and we're just about through that. So...
There are three specific resolutions. One is to finalize the project, second is to authorize the pre-construction funds, and third is to state that that money can eventually be bonded. Those are the three specific actions.
It's appropriate for me to add now that this has been a co-chair on the committee, and I did not mention Jim Bell's name, and I certainly wanted to recognize that for the community in case people were not aware of it. They have been a dynamic duo, a wonderful team working together, and we appreciate very much having your community member to dedicate this much time to our Board of Education and to the schools. So, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, so we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? Terrific.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Before we move and adjourn into executive session, there is one more opportunity for comments from the public. As mentioned before, two minutes to each speaker, 15 minutes to each subject. Are there any comments? Hearing none? Can I get a motion to adjourn into executive session? Do you? Second? Allison. That's the hardest part of the job, isn't it?
Especially since it's straight across instead of in the egg.
Well, no, that's harder.
I'll be with this tomorrow.
I haven't been in those rooms since I was still in elementary school. You could do it from here, Carl practice in here 35 years ago.
All those in favor, moving to executive session.
Okay, people. There we go.
Thank you.